Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Oh, I thought, yeah, I went to work. Okay, minister reports received and filed?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Committee liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
Don't have anything till next Tuesday.
Yeah, it's not much, this is good. Yep, don't forget Small Business Saturday, though.
When?
Uh, it's Sunday.
Cool. So what are you supposed to do?
You're supposed to spend money locally, small businesses.
Specifically at Sam's, correct?
I'm not, I'm not, but, you know...
What constitutes a small business?
Less than 25 employees.
Less than 25 employees?
Yeah, so you'd be a small business.
I'll start, it's gonna be far, go into like Orson's or something, because I need dog food and tell them we can't buy from them. Are they considered local, small?
I think they're headquartered what, out of Mexico?
You better just keep the meeting moving, we'll be all day, I've got all kinds of questions.
Okay, Commission comments, well, you're the Commission comments. Bids and contracts, 2017, 2016 dash 29 R1 Uniform Garments Rental and Lease Renewal.
This is for the Public Works uniforms, and we had two bids in 2016, and the one they had before that, that didn't work out so well, they got Airmark last year, and they were the same price as the other company, and they've held pricing for this year, so I'm looking for approval to continue that contract.
What's included in that?
As far as the clothing?
Yep.
Pants, blue jeans, regular pants, blue jeans cargo, dress, work pants, long sleeve shirts, short sleeve shirts, short sleeve Class II t-shirts, casual short sleeve knit shirts, casual long sleeve shirts, casual short sleeve shirt shirts, long sleeve coats.
What do we pay for?
Let me just hand this to you.
Yeah.
I mean, surely everybody doesn't get all that stuff, do they?
No, what we do is, like, some of the inspectors will get the casual stuff, the uniforms, the guys all wear historic blue jeans and stuff like that.
Um, Coach, do you have, like, we were talking about reflective coats and things like that, because we're talking about EMS, do they, do we have a standard coat, they...
These are just a heavy, well, not heavy, they're heavy cloth, they're not car art type materials, it's just jackets that they put on, they've got their name on them.
So it's like a lightweight coat?
Yeah, we, the guys all wear vests if they're out on the road.
Okay, okay.
Now, the t-shirts that they're on there are Class II, they do have reflective on them.
Okay.
That's for during summer, when it gets a little cooler from where just the t-shirts with that reflective on them.
So the, they get several pairs of pants, and they can choose to be laundered or not?
Right.
Or they can, or they basically lease them?
Yeah, some of the guys actually, you know, they'll wash them at home, mechanics and the guys like that, they're in the heavy dirt and stuff, they definitely get them laundered.
Okay. And so, the guys that, that actually use a laundry service, they get two sets, basically?
They all get two sets, yeah.
And they rotate them out?
Right.
And the guys that don't use the service, they, what do they get? They get two sets too, or...
I think they get two sets, we're discharged if they bring them in to get them laundered.
Okay. And so, certain times of the year they get short sleeve shirts, and other times of the year they get long sleeve shirts? Just curious. Good with it?
Mm-hmm.
I'm good.
Good tip.
Who does that with?
Huh?
Airmark.
Airmark. I move that we renew the uniform garments rental and lease with Airmark.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we got any unfinished business? Nope. New business, Accounts Payable Review.
I ask for approval, Accounts Payable Pending Review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of sole source CAD software 2017 dash SS-11.
This is part of that package that I spoke about earlier, this was actually in our budget for this in 2017 in capital improvements, so it's just adding another module to the current Interpol system that we have now.
And this, we talked this morning, this allows you, through your MDTs, to run license plates?
We'll be able to run vehicles, people, and items.
Okay. I'm good.
Good.
So who's the sole source with?
Huber and Associates.
Okay. I move that we approve the sole source advertisement for CAD software with Huber and Associates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Approving credit card application for health departments.
It's not really a credit card, so we order a lot of things from...
It's like, no.
Yeah, we order a lot of things from McKesson, we get a lot of, um, some medical supplies from there, and it's a credit, so, you know, I think it's because we don't order it on a credit card, we order it, and then we pay them within 30 days, they want this credit application on file to know that we will be good for the money, because we don't pay with a credit card when we order it.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just a credit application with this McKesson?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's just because we, yeah, we don't pay when we order, they know us, so they want to know we're good for it.
I move that we sign the credit application with McKesson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Exchange Migration Purchase.
Yeah, so, so this is kind of going back to what I discussed earlier about the fragility of our current exchange server, so, what I did was, I went through, and this is going to be a cooperative procurement purchase through Worldwide Technology, it's off a state contract, so, that really needs to be done sooner rather than later, and I've got the money budgeted, although it was originally earmarked for switches for the county, I've basically changed the priority of that to get the exchange server upgrade completed, and then, the only other thing I want to add to it is, is I will use, be using Rich Bizard's sum for this whole process, since he has the historical background on the, on the equipment.
Fragility, man, I'm...
It's fragile.
I'm impressed.
It's fragile.
It's a good word, isn't it?
Is this all within budget?
Absolutely, yeah.
Fragility, that's what it was.
Fragility.
Yeah. Fragility?
Fragility.
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 Not frugality?
No, fragility.
I thought you said frugality, I thought, good.
Be frugal.
So what are we gonna do, switches?
So, switches are for next year now. There, and that's budgeted for 2000, in the 2018 budget, so...
So did you have this stuff, originally it was in next year?
Yes.
And switches were in this year, and you're switching it?
That's right, yeah, since I wasn't the originator of the 2017 budget.
That, that makes it easier to swap, that you're just gonna swap the...
Absolutely, absolutely, probably gonna save you money in the long run.
Something about the stuff that you always bring to us is always expensive.
It is expensive, but it's only expensive one time for five years.
Brian's, Brian's Black Friday shopping, so he's gonna save us money.
He's gonna bring us cinnamon rolls.
And we don't want our email down for three days.
No.
I kind of enjoyed it.
Yeah, well, true.
I didn't, I didn't really enjoy it.
Some people, they've forgotten how to dial phones.
Hey, I don't like to talk to people either, I just had three days of breaks from their emails.
You did?
Yep.
We good?
Yep.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta take care of that for a while, do you have our equipment?
I move that we approve the exchange migration purchase.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of Irma on Randall Drive NID.
Well, this was Joy Howard, and she's the financial advisor, she's asking basically this letter to give her permission to work with the same financial institution as she did with the Parkview metal NID and according to all that, it does not have to be, she can be the negotiator, she doesn't get it out, if that makes sense, if she doesn't, doesn't obligate us to anything, if she doesn't get a good deal from this company, then we'll go back and try to...
Sell them somewhere else.
We do this on all of them, right?
It's kind of different, we've had these two short-term notes first time, and when she bid on the first short-term note, she got a very good deal from this company, but she wants to now go back to, to talk to them.
What I gathered out of it was, it was a very small sale, bond sale, and so, a lot of times you don't get a whole lot of people interested in those small amounts, and this one's even smaller, so... Seems to make sense to try to use them and see if they're interested, so...
That's the one that we used for Parkview, so, yeah, so, very good.
So we have to read this a certain way, Debbie, or...
Um, no, I would just say that you're signing a letter of that MR...
Okay.
J and W, if it's called, it's called, J and W. That email was attached?
I move that we... I move that we use WM Financial Strategies as our representative for the, as an independent registered municipal advisor.
Second.
Yep.
Sure you were done.
Whatever, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of the Otis Repair Order for the Carnegie Building.
Yeah, that's for Greg, he's not here, but this is the agreement, this is on the Carnegie Building, this is on the national contract for the pricing, so if you'd like to get that approved.
Have he talked to you guys about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just for basically a control valve for the elevator.
And if I, if you sign it, then I get it faxed off and the parts will be here, I guess it is actually down.
So this is a cooperative, um...
Yes.
State, on a state cooperative purchase?
Yeah, I think it's actually a national contract, yes.
Good.
Is that the same elevator that's, oh, have we replaced that, or...
No, in the Carnegie Building, I don't think we've put that...
I think that's the original one that they put out.
Oh, as far as the original one?
I wouldn't think so, but it's, boy, it's been there a long time, if it is.
It's been there for me, and it's over 27 years, so I don't know. I don't remember replacing it.
Oh, this wellness, they need to just walk the steps.
That's what we do, we never use our...
You don't use your elevator at all, do you?
Well, you guys are perfect, because you've got a way in, but, yeah, because there's steps either way you come in that older building, so you gotta have, well, I guess through the back door you can come in and go down, for handicap.
That's a fine building, we're, keep talking up some fine buildings, so when we want to list it, it's...
So we're not, we're not signing this access alert system, right? Highlighted in yellow, additional costs there?
No. The way I understood it.
Okay.
And Jill has reviewed it.
Yeah, we'll just sign the back, so, right. I move that we approve the purchase of the valve for the repair of the elevator at the Carnegie Building with Otis Technologies.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, that's our regular, what other issues?
So we had, oh, we had several transfers that came through, and, um... Anyway, talked to Debbie about this extradition with the sheriff, that we're spinning out of contingency, but she said we will be getting the money back for that one, um, and then sheriff also had this, you guys, talked to you about, this overtime, coming out of salaries. Thought he was gonna save us money on overtime, but... He was taking it out of salary, so he must be down on salaries and up on overtime. And we got this transfer for uniforms from EMS, and...
And I'm sure Jerry didn't know this, but I'm just gonna say, we don't transfer in and among salary lines, we do if it's salary line, we'll take it from salary and put it in overtime, overtime, put it in part-time, part-time, but we never transfer out of a salary line to put in another expense line. Probably didn't know that, but that's in the order of the budget, that we can't use in and among only in the salary. So, he did change that one from, out of contingency, trying to take it out of part-time or overtime?
Overtime.
Overtime.
I think I've got some other, I didn't know that, so I, I'm waiting for these payables to get through so I can run my year-to-date, I think I've got some other areas out of the contingency that I can pull from, just wait for these payables to clear so I can look at the year-to-date numbers and see, but I didn't know that, I was trying to keep out of contingency. But overtime is, I think we're probably close to 2,000 under.
And as you guys know, at the end of the year, if we have, like, retirement that's short, or if we have salaries that are short, I will transfer in and among those lines to make payroll right, you know, but not really use that for anywhere else.
Is that the same with part-time?
Yes.
So you can pull from overtime to part-time?
I can, but I just don't do it at the end of the year, so if you know during the year, it's gonna be...
Because part-time is, is close to being maxed, but like I said, we're 75,000 to 100,000 under in overtime.
Yeah, if you know you're gonna do that before the end of the year, then I would, send me a transfer from...
Just leave the money blank, leave the dollars blank, because I don't know what the dollars are gonna be.
And I don't either, until everyone payroll.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll send you that, I'll just leave the dollars blank, and you can pull this in.
Okay.
Because we'll, we'll need some for part-time, but we got plenty of overtime.
So we got that uniform transfer, and, um... Anyway, and then we also have a bill that was submitted from EMS for uniforms out of contingency, which was for more badges, that I did not approve last Accounts Payable, um, so, anyway, we got those two items out there that we need to talk about.
Okay.
So, anyway, I, I don't know, that's it.
We just gotta figure out what we're gonna do with the badges, because that's part of the hiccup, right? Because we went through that whole list of stuff that one day, and I think that's where Jerry's understanding was that that got okayed, right? What, the badges, that that got okayed with the purchase of those, I mean, it was that whole list of stuff that got approved.
We promoted two people, so we had to get the badges.
So, but then I think the other part of it was the price on the badges that probably was an issue, but the badges, I thought, got approved whenever he came up with this whole list of stuff, and kind of got the okay to go ahead with it, and I think there's an email to that effect that, that even says in there, let me make sure that I got this all right, and I think badges was in that email, so...
And again, I...
But I don't think we had a price on the badges at the time, and...
I'm, uh, if we don't want to do it out of contingency, there's other places to take it from now that I'm more savvy on BS and A, so... Valeries always just takes it from contingency, that's what...
Well, badges was one of the things that I didn't, I wasn't for from first, from the get-go, so...
Yeah, I, I just don't recall approving it, I mean, I remember seeing a presentation about it, but then I was shocked when we got the bill for it, and then we got more badges coming, and, and here we are trying to get jackets, which to me is a ton more essential than a badge, um, and, uh, anyway, so we're short in our, we're short in our uniform allotment because, you know, not, not just because of badges, but that's, that's a big chunk of it, and, uh, and now we're, you know, now we got a transfer for over $15,000 to, to try to accommodate uniforms, and so... Anyway, I mean, I, I realize that people do need uniforms, but, um... And I, I just, I thought we were talking about jackets for people because it's winter, and, and of course, the list that you sent, Jerry, it had a whole lot more than jackets, it had pants and shirts and other things too.
Well, it's just the standard, I asked Valerie to put together exactly what was out there for, for being ordered, I still have people that have worked here a month that don't have uniforms, so...
We've got additional staff because of the part-timers, right?
So we're, we're getting new employees.
And we've not purchased any coats at all in 2017, again, I got people wearing coats from home at work that aren't OSHA EMS compliant, because we have not bought coats all year, now it's 20 degrees, and they still are wearing coats from home, so, I don't know what else to do.
So the coats we're getting, do they have the reflective and all that? Okay, that, you know, when you're out in the middle of the night...
They're in the state bid.
Yeah, okay.
And I guess, just Kristin and I, the amount of the transfers for uniforms compared to what we budgeted, compared to where we're at, has gone double, so that's why we're questioning, so...
You brought, how many new employees?
We brought about a grand, with, in total, about 40 to 45, we've had some turnover, had people leaving, we recycle those uniforms, we can get them laundered and cleaned and put in plastic bags and hung up so they can be reissued, the problem is the sizing, so...
Yeah.
We gotta find people to the size, and we've got a closet full of uniforms, so we take new employees back to try and fit them in, but if they don't fit in any, then we have to order.
Yeah, so that's part of it, it says you've got so many new hires.
Sure, and again, because of that hiring of the part-time staff, we've saved, like I said, somewhere in the neighborhood of 75,000 to 100,000 dollars in overtime.
I want them to have jackets, I want them, I want them to have the appropriate jackets.
I've never had a jacket, this is my jacket.
I want them to have jackets too, but, you know, obviously, you know, we need to be frugal in what we're spending money on too, I mean, um... You know, we got a lot of Class, Class B uniforms that, a lot of people are in Class B uniforms instead of wearing the typical just gray collared shirt, um, so, anyway, I mean, I just want to make sure that it's a reflective jacket, and, you know, if we need to hold off on the, on the pullovers that Jerry's wearing here, you know, then we need to hold off on that, I mean, obviously, a jacket's different than, you know, I, I believe that's more important too, but, um... I was trying to pull this up.
Yeah, I just, I think though, if you've got 40 new hires, we gotta have them, you know, so they know that they're EMS, but they're not wearing a...
Right now I got people in black pants, white shirts, gray shirts, blue coats, yellow coats, you name it.
I'm still, uh... I think everybody should have their size coat, but, I mean, if we got, how many did you say, 40, 40 new people?
Well, 40 new people, but there's been people that have left as well, so, we're hovering right at 100 total employees, and I don't know how that, that goes from last, I don't know if that's the same number, if it's more, I don't know where we were at in 2016. My guess is it's probably a net of 20 more or so, and I'm just guessing, but like I said, to me, it's, it's money well-invested because the savings is in payroll and overtime, exponentially higher than the cost of outfitting at the start.
And we budgeted, and spent, I should say, in 16, 14,400, so far, without that transfer, we're at 20, almost 23,000.
But again, in 16, they put the stop on buying coats because they knew they weren't permitted, so it's been over a year since we've purchased any coats, and that's the majority of the 15,000, the rest is just cleanup from the new hires, and all that's been, put a stop on that entire order, so, um... Again, I got people that don't have uniforms.
The coats, we do have their, they meet the...
Yeah, they meet all the OT, whatever that is, Class II standard, whatever. It's the yellow with the reflective, to a certain candle.
You can have all kinds of stuff, people still hit you, it's... Highway policeman who was just sitting there, and a guy was texting, anyway.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I get that it's not what was budgeted, I don't, I was budgeted, I was going, I came here to buy clothes for everybody, it was late enough in the year, and the winter was mild enough, we just didn't do it last year, the transfer had already taken place, because I don't see anywhere where that money was put in there, because a minimum of 200 bucks per coat, times 100 employees is 20,000 dollars, so, there's only 19 budgeted in total, or whatever it was, Debbie said, that was not put in, in the budget last year, this was an oversight, sus plan, it's just, it is what it is. This was an oversight, um, susplained, it's just, it is what it is.
When they're expensive coats, I mean, I don't, I don't doubt that our people need them. I just don't know that we should be buying them for every person. I mean, you know, if we got a hundred coats amongst several different places, surely you can have enough for the outfit people that, um, because they're, you know, surely they're not wearing them every day.
Sorry, everybody needs their own coat. Sheriff's Department doesn't share coats, Fire Department doesn't share coats. We don't share coats. Everybody needs their own coat. Two people wear largest, and somebody just gets out of their coat from the day before and it's got a few specks of blood on it. They don't want to wear that coat.
I'm not wearing somebody else's coat unless I have to. So, I'm fine with getting their coats. I mean, there's other stuff that along the lines that I didn't necessarily want. Uniforms and stuff are pretty much required.
I think, I think you're right. After they've worn them for their shift, got, you know, I mean, you, you can have all kinds of stuff on there that...
What if they're in the middle of their shift?
There are some things that OSHA requires you to provide washing facilities in the middle of the shift. Or bag them and get them cleaned in appropriate facility.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so everybody has their own coat, and then something happens in the middle of the shift? I mean, are we, are we got extra coats for them to wear, or?
No, just, you wash it. Nine times out of ten, it's not anything that's significant enough that you have to wash it. If it is that significant enough, then we have to bag it and send it to our biohazard place, and they assess it in return if it's ruined or not.
I'm fine with the coats part. That, that's not even the problem. The, I didn't, from the get-go, I didn't like the badges. But most of the stuff on your list that you was asking for, if it wasn't generating revenue, I was against it anyway, so. That was, the coats is something I think that they got to have. I just, personally, I won't wear somebody else's. I don't know who had it, or if they took a shower, or they got bedbugs in their hair, what have you. So, on that, that part of it, I'm totally fine with the, the coats. That makes perfect sense to me.
So, the coats and the uniforms that he has in there make up the fifteen thousand dollars. And then there's another transfer for the other badges that was in last, last week's accounts payable. So, anyway, that's already been purchased and put on the credit card, so.
So, then the rest of it is the badges, right?
Yeah, it was four, it was four hundred dollars. It was too bad.
Well, maybe a small amount, but the price of each badge to me is, is crazy, but... I don't know.
Once we get, those will be turned back in and reused?
Uh, no, they got their names on them.
It's got their name on it, oh, shoot, okay.
So, it'll be an ongoing cost as people get promoted or whatever.
I'm just not sure what the reason for badges are necessarily, so. I've, I've, it's not been one of my favorite things anyway. I would think it was something that would get in the way more than anything. We talk about, I mean, it's already embroidered on your clothes and stuff, so.
Not the badges, it's the logo.
Yeah, the logo, but, I mean, what's a badge do besides, I guess it signifies your rank or something that is part of it that y'all were doing?
It was, it was badges and collar, um...
Pins.
Pins and something else.
I didn't want to do it because then public works would want them. They'd want some kind of badges out there.
They just want to do animal.
Sorry, Larry, you were sitting there quiet, I had to throw you in there.
Don't hold me into this.
But I mean, the badges have already been bought, they're on the credit cards.
We want to stay with the badges and it's part of the uniform, and let's just make up our minds, we stay with it and do it.
I just, I just want to make sure we get our uniform costs out and under control. I mean, I don't care if it's badges, coats. I mean, obviously, we need basic uniforms, but, I mean, we're, we're getting up there where we're expending a ton of money.
My assessment with all due respect is the uniform cost is under control. We're not buying anything that, I mean, we're not out buying people more than their allotted. I sent you the policy. Full-time people get three sets, part-time get two sets. They get a sweatshirt and they get a jacket when they haven't got a jacket. And like I said, jackets weren't budgeted. I, I don't know why, I don't know how, it just didn't get done, even though I was told that was one of the first things I needed to do once the new uniform that was done, was to, to buy the jackets because they put a hold on it because they were changing the style to go to a D O T approved that was more inexpensive, less expensive. So, and that's what happened, we just didn't buy them.
I think, I think uniforms are essential, but of course, you know, your, your draft policy didn't include ball caps, didn't include stocking caps, didn't include t-shirts, and didn't include boots.
We don't, we don't buy t-shirts. If there's, if you...
We did, we did buy t-shirts.
T-shirt on, they bought it.
The EMS red t-shirts, we didn't buy?
They bought it.
But I mean, we, you know, there was something there about ball caps, stocking caps, and then also boots. And so, I didn't see anything about that. And then, of course, in, in future years, I, I didn't see anything in the policy about replacement. So, I'd like to, like to just see those things added and what we're doing as far as that goes, just so that we can be consistent.
Standard is two years unless it's ruined in the light of day. Then it's replaced. Otherwise, the standard is two years. Hats, boots, coats, the whole works. Everything should last two years.
I didn't get to read through the whole policy, so if that's something that we need to sit down and just go through.
Are you going to get a whole manual?
Yeah, that's what I...
Well, we can do one by one as it comes up, because it's a lot easier for me to swallow that stuff because I'm not real good at sitting down and reading, I think everybody knows that. So, if we, this is something that we're addressing now and stuff that's coming up, now's probably when we should look at it. Ball caps, not included. You want boots, do we do stipend for them? We don't do anything for shoes and boots?
Amount is limited. They have to buy what's approved on the bid. They don't buy what's on the bid, they buy them themselves.
So...
So, they...
It's like three styles.
They buy their own boots, but they buy their own boots, right? They just get them off your bid? So, we do buy their boots, okay?
Again, as long as it's part of the bid. They have two or three to pick from.
So, if they're adding boots from Emergency Services Plus, but they want the ones from Emergency Services Plus Plus for ninety-six dollars, they got to pay the difference.
They got to buy them right now, the way it stands.
Oh.
If you don't buy what's on the bid, you buy the boots.
I mean, I...
And we have different, different departments have different policies, which makes it quite difficult.
We can change that.
Yeah. It'd be nice if we looked at countywide.
I think that there should be some kind of uniform policy, a uniform, uniform policy, so.
I like that.
This should be, I mean, they should be consistent. We shouldn't be doing one thing for public works, or one thing for, you're getting dragged into it again, Larry. One thing for ambulance, and one for the sheriff.
I don't know how you're going to do that, but...
There's going to be some differences, because obviously, you are different types of services. But I think for boots, it should be the same. If they have a contractor, a bid for boots, they don't have to be the same boots that you all have, so.
That's why we use the sheriff's bid.
I'd just be happy I was getting a boot allowance up there that way. I don't get any shoe allowance, it's from my boss.
Okay, so we need to approve the, the badges that were purchased then, or?
If we're going to stay with the badges and they're going to have badges, then...
Okay, but no more, no more till next year?
No more badges till next year?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he's out of money, basically.
So, you don't get to buy any more this year? How many more you got to have? Can't take the little magic marker and put a dick mark or something on there? You're number three now? Okay, so we got all the badges, all the, basically, all the coats will be ordered?
They were ordered once and were stocked.
Okay.
So, if we're going to approve the uniforms, where do you want it to come out of? Contingency, or?
Probably Finance Department, take it from them. I guess contingency.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going to have to get them sometime, so if we push it off till next year, then it would just have to come out of... Uniforms next year, which that money would be in there, maybe we just don't do as much in uniforms next year. Actually, next year, we shouldn't have much to do in uniforms. We should be about whole now, right?
So, so for coats, everybody hired in 2017 on that bid there is getting a coat. Pre-2017 people will need coats in next year's budget, and that's in there right now. That part is in there right now.
Okay, so we hadn't bought any coats since sixteen?
We haven't bought any coats for any of the longer tenured employees. These are just people that were hired in 2017.
Give the older people the new coats, and then take their coats and pass them on to the little brother. He gets the AMD. You're not sharing them, you're, that's yours. They'll wash it.
You clean them, I mean, you don't give them a dirty coat that's...
Although, they don't get to keep their coats when they leave. When they leave, they hang it up and wash it, hang it up in the closet with plastic on it till they fill up position, and... And we're going to need extras too, because you're not always filling them with the same size person.
In fact, if, if they go at a, at a month of not turning their uniforms, and we, we continue to notify them through that month, and at the end of the month, we turn up at the sheriff's department, and the sheriff's deputy calls them and tells them that they can either turn it in in three days or they'll file a debt charges.
Do that, or take it out of their last check?
We can't do that.
Huh?
I was told I can't do that.
We used to be able to do that, we can't do it anymore.
Says who?
I think you can do whatever you want.
I was going to say.
I don't think it's legal.
Well, let them sue us. We've been sued before.
That means you can't do it.
Sue again right now.
Just because Jill's not here, Jeff's not here.
We'll put it in our policy manual, if you don't turn it at the end of the year, we're going to keep your eighty-two dollars to pay for the coat you're not turning in, you can keep it.
Sure, it's a little more than eighty-two dollars.
Hundred and eighty-two, what are their prices?
Probably close to a felony.
Debbie, you really don't want people running around wearing our coats who aren't working for us?
Now, that, I'll be honest with you, the theft thing, we had to do that once. We had to, we had everything the next day.
You can get a t-shirt that says whatever you want to on it, you need the Co-County EMS to be running around all day long. I wouldn't want it, because it's somebody's... You want to give them CPR? No.
Okay, so out of contingency? Okay, I changed it on the transfer, so.
Yeah.
I think that was it.
Okay.
You guys got anything else?
We get a point of clarification for that CAD, please.
No, I'm sorry, we're already, we are already... Allison, you said please.
On that approval for the CAD earlier, and we technically approved the advertisement, can we just get clarification that it's for the actual purchase? Because we already ran the ad, and we got no calls contesting it.
So, now what do you?
So, we, we moved, we made a motion to approve the sole source advertisement.
Yeah.
Right.
Which area did?
Yeah. And so, what do you want us to, what?
I don't even know why you need us.
Approve the purchase.
Oh.
The purchase itself versus the advertisement.
Well, you wanted us to sign on the advertisement that you gave up here.
Well, that's...
Can we do that at the same ti, I mean?
Well, we just, we didn't make a motion to purchase it.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Yes, but I was just giving you crap for running it without the...
That's going to cost somebody a cinnamon roll.
Maybe you had ministerial emails saying you could run it.
Yes.
Yeah, like, that comes from our sunshine lawn.
I mean, I know you do that all the time, but, anyway, I guess you do some research and determine, somehow determine that it's sole source.
Well, in that case, Hubert Associates did the Interpol software, right? And so, it's an add-on module to that. So, yeah, I make sure that it makes sense, you know, before I run it. Makes sense to me, and then I'll run it, and that's not one of the expensive ones. Those are like twenty, twenty-five bucks. And yeah, whenever the ten days has passed, that's statutorily required, we bring it into you.
But we either, we either run that ad saying, okay, this is sole source, if anybody else says it's not, you've got this time to say something, or we can do a full-fledged bid, which is going to cost us even more.
Right.
So, and longer than this is...
I mean, I do use common sense if this is sole source.
Right, right, I'm getting this, we don't really need to approve the sole source advertisement.
Right, and the reason I give it to you to sign like that is because statute says that you have to approve in writing and enter into the minutes. So, that's the reason I do it like that. That way, you can read the ad and then sign it, quote unquote, in writing.
I didn't notice the ad, I mean, did you put our pictures with it, or?
Yeah.
This next, this coming year, I want to...
Full page color?
Well, I wanted three columns in color with my photo in them.
We can do that, yeah, absolutely.
I'm a no on that one. That was not a mo, uh, motion.
It's recorded, I have it.
It wasn't approved.
Yeah.
It's died from a lack of a second. All right, so, I'm fine with it, yes.
No, it'll just be a P O.
I move that we approve, or approve the purchase of the CAD software.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Um, I just emailed you all, or forwarded an email from Campo, MoDOT's, asking the planning partners, which is RPC, so you might have heard about it, and the MPOs to submit any projects that we might want to have. And they're trying to get a list together, I guess, to bring to the legislative bodies to show them what they could get done with more money, which figured we'd have a list like that every year, but, um... So, I forwarded it to you. They, they did have a list attached to it. If there's something else you want to add it on it, let me know. Or even for that matter, I mean, we can bring it up at Campo and talk about it. Larry, you got the email too, right?
Yes.
Did you see anything that we might want to add to it?
Uh, no, I really haven't had a chance to sit out there and talk about it, but...
Okay, well, I wanted by the twenty-eighth, I think it's next Tuesday, so we don't have a whole lot of time to add to it. But these are all things that were approved by the technical committee and have been looked at.
That was, I think, what was it, Amendment seven or whatever was on the list at that time?
I forget what it was, if it says it, yeah, it was.
You know, that's what we put together the last time, we just, they just worked the list back out there. Uh, we'll be, Eric and I will, but I suspect we won't have any addition. If anything, it might be some reductions from it.
I've heard a couple of different things they're looking at doing, possibly the ten cent sales tax on the gas, or gas tax, and then possibly a law enforcement sales tax, because then that would take, could free up the money that comes out of their funding to go to Highway Patrol.
Right, the funding that currently is taken out of MoDOT's budget to fund Highway Patrol, we're talking about law enforcement sales tax, um, so we can free that money up for MoDOT, so.
Which I don't know if that would really help us individually in the county, though.
Well, it, it probably would, it'd have more projects out there that we could make a walk with the, the state, you know, try to get that stuff.
Yeah, it wouldn't affect our card funding or any of that, it's all national, so.
I think there was some, I'd have to go back.
Mayor!
I'm in the middle of this meeting, but I think the mayor can interrupt if she's bringing donuts, right?
Well, on the agenda.
One for each of you, and you can share. I'm taking these on behalf of the new owner, Anu, who has a new business in Jefferson City that has good donuts. And he asked if I would deliver to East and Fire and also to the county, so you can share with the sheriffs as well, the sheriff's department, so. Because we left, oh, no, this is being recorded, so I don't know if they're going to...
Yeah.
Now, this isn't construed as a bribe or anything, is it?
Well, I will, I will take a selfie and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And I'm thankful for all the work that you all do at the commission and all those that protect our republic works and all those, you know, the county, the sheriff's department that does such a great job to keep Jefferson City safe and running, so I better keep this away from you.
There you go, yeah.
Boy, you bring it to us after they fed us, that's...
Thank you, yeah. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
We'll see you at the next meeting, we're gonna bust in on you all. Yeah.
Well, I think President Bruce got a new campaign going, so we could maybe bring liquid cheer.
Liquid cheer.
Not voting no.
So, Campo's trying to get a list together to take the legislators to push something as far as fixing the highway funding?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure where they're going with it, they just want to get a list together and say this is stuff that could be improved if they do put the gas tax on it.
I think it's to show needs out there, each of the RPC's, um, needs of projects that currently are unfunded, just because MoDOT doesn't have the money, and I think that's what they're trying to do, is just show them that there's a current list of needs out there that with the current funding, they can't meet, and this is just, uh, the highlight, you know, there are still projects that need to be done, you know, we have several around here, so.
Every lettered route in Coal County?
Yeah, as long as they keep them, I don't want them.
Well, that's what I mean, every lettered route in Coal County needs some kind of work.
Yeah.
I don't think we'd get hurt too bad, because if they go back to the last three years of spending on the lettered routes, what they just put in Route B, or B seventy-nine?
Well, yeah, but that's
Or B seventy, I mean.
That's across the state, the one they, they do
No, I don't agree with that at all, Larry.
Yeah.
But I'm saying what they just spent on that road.
Well, you know, here in the county, there's
That was their
There are several bridges, I know, you know, out on Route A, Double A, there's bridges that need to be replaced or repaired, uh, so there is a list of needs, uh, that need to be done, so.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from RPC about that, but did they just?
We actually have a tack meeting, uh, they call it one
Next week?
Yes.
Okay.
To discuss this very same thing.
Okay.
I'm gonna meet with the RPC, and then Campo's the other partner that we're a member of, so.
Okay. I mean, I see about ten things on the list that they have, and a lot of it's not even road and bridge stuff, and that's kind of what, that bugs me more than anything, is seeing more of it being spent on the buses and bicycles and stuff like that, but they do have to have the alternative, I guess, forms of transportation. But I'd still put all the other stuff way above it.
Well, they do, but they have to look at, have to look at ways that make a whole lot more sense, too, and, you know, they buy a lot of those buses and stuff through federal grants, and, and I think we all know that, you know, it's a, it's not a moneymaker.
No, without, without the federal aid for the buses, uh, local transportation here in Jefferson City, as well as Columbia and all the other bigger cities, would probably, wouldn't be a, um, a reality, and
Somebody needs to tell the feds that we don't have to have a seventy-two person bus to haul these eight people around town. So
I can disagree with that, Jeff.
It makes sense.
Do a ride-share or something, and a minivan, so.
But, I mean, they're looking at some of that, too, they've done some extensive studies on Jeff train and stuff, even getting up in the Holt Summit area, what kind of, you know, you gotta have some kind of demand, and then you gotta figure out how the hell you're gonna pay for it.
Exactly, I know there's
Roger would love to have some kind of transportation from, or public transportation from, uh, Holt Summit down there, but
Well, there's even been talk, you know, they received some comments during their last, um, study, that even from the Westview, uh, Westview Heights subdivision, that there was interest of bus service out there, but again, um, you know, how do you pay for it?
Weekend hours, extended hours during the day, so, okay, let's hire about six more people, have some overtime, pay another bus to go on Saturday's maintenance.
There is bus service to Westview Heights, but it just doesn't go into the subdivision, it's there at Scruggs and Country Club, so.
Right.
Um, travel that a lot, I don't see very many people sitting up there, and, you know, may have to walk a mile to get to the bus stop, but I don't see too many people riding bicycles either, and they could get to, to and from work on a bicycle, so, anyway, it's all on if you really want to do it or not.
Only bicycle I ride has got a motor on it, so.
Bicycle I ride anymore's got four wheels on it.
Well, they make electric ones now.
Seen that.
Hunting bicycles.
Well, our minutes from the DevNet presentation came through, and that reminded me, do we have, are they gonna get us a copy of what they presented to us, um, DevNet and Clear Basin? Did, did we get extra documents from them for Sam and I, since we weren't able to make it, that we can look through, or since we weren't here, where?
Clear Basin said, I wasn't here for the whole meeting, but I asked for them, and they did not have anything extra that they handed out at that meeting, at that presentation, other than what they did on, when we received their bid, and then, um, DevNet handed out, handouts, but it wasn't what they put in their bid, it was just
I saw the one that Chris had.
Yeah.
There was some information.
Yeah, it had, it listed their
I can, uh, I just got that one copy, I don't know, uh
I do have
Danielle, did you have, uh, one of those, or DevNet?
I have one to keep in mind, but I can always make copies if somebody wanted me to make copies of this.
I would just, if you scan it, can you scan it, instead of making a paper copy?
Or whatever, yeah.
I mean, can I have them send it to us, whatever they gave to us at the meeting? Because I would think they would have brought enough for everybody.
They did have a lot.
Yeah, because
I'm not voting for either one of them, unless I get some information.
Well, I think, uh, Clear Basin's was all in their bid packet, they didn't bring any extra.
But DevNet handed out was not
Well, I mean, there's lots of times you go to a presentation, they don't they don't bring everybody a copy of
I didn't get a copy, no.
They don't bring everybody a copy of their presentation, but they'll give you a, they can email it to you, so you can look through it at your convenience.
Jennifer would have the, uh, bid, the bid thing that Clear Basin had, or the bid for probably both of them, so.
I might like to see, I'd like to see those.
But, uh, I can, I can give you, uh, guys, the information that I got, one of them was just a generic folder, and the other one was just a little more detailed, but, anyway. So. We do need to, uh, set an agenda or something to make a decision on that.
Yeah, fairly soon.
We wanting to do something next week, or the week after, or?
Speaking of the agenda, next week you have a meeting, you know, on the twenty-eighth, the next week, the fifth, which is the next Tuesday, is the budget hearings, and that starts at eight-thirty in the morning, so there's really not a commission meeting that week, so, but we have budget hearing meetings, but on the sixth, um, I'm not gonna be here in the morning, it's an appointment I had set for my daughter six months ago, so sorry, I mean, you guys can have the budget meeting if you want, um, if we want to start later that day, then we can do that.
You want us to do it without you, Debbie, are you saying you want us to need you?
No.
We need you.
Christian will be here, so you can do it if you want.
Is there stuff in there that we're gonna need you here for, or can we, if we just go ahead, what, if anything gets hung up, or we need information on it, we can wait and address it later.
So, what are we doing on the
Or not.
What are we doing on the fifth, is six just carryover?
Well, the, the fifth is talking to each individual department, it's already scheduled.
Yes, it's all day.
Everybody is scheduled to come in and talk about the budget compared to what, and the budget officer came up with, and then, then the next few days is for you guys to decide on those things that they're asking for, changes from what the budget officer has already submitted, so yeah, I'd kind of like to be here to put it in the system on your behalf, as far as what changes you want to make, so
That's the sixth?
Yes.
So when will you be here?
Our appointment's in Columbia, eight.
So you want to be here till noon?
I should be here by ten-thirty or so.
So we could switch it from noon to four?
From nine to noon, you mean?
Well, it's at nine to noon right now, but we could start at noon, go till four or something. I'm just throwing it out there, we could do eleven to whenever, I don't
What are we doing on the seventh, same thing?
Yes.
If needed?
Yeah, actually, I assumed we would, and the next week is kind of asking it.
Okay.
So, so we don't have a commission meeting set for that week, then, other than just budget?
So I was kind of really want to put it in that Wednesday, but then I realized I couldn't be here either, so we can have a commission meeting on the Thursday if we want, before we talk about budget, just so in case people have stuff they need to get in before waiting the next week, basically waiting two weeks.
So
You can watch it live. I'm just teasing.
But on the, on the Clear Basin, we have to decide before the end of the year.
And Jennifer, I'm sorry, that's why I brought Jennifer back in here, too.
Heard this.
There's some pretty critical timing with, uh, making a decision on collector, assessor stuff, and personal property's a big one, um, and keep in mind that, when did they want to have that implemented by?
March first.
That's total implementation, right?
Yeah, and Larry had sent an email the other day, I sent an email to the two bidders to see if maybe willing to renew their contracts on a month-to-month basis, I've not heard back, I said that was Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's gonna make
Anyway, evidently, the personal property is a more critical component of it, and, uh, anyway, I think we need to make a decision no later than probably the fifth, um, just because I think we need to give them a thirty-day window to try to get some stuff done, and then, um, or at least give them notice to proceed, and then if they can proceed quicker than that, then, then great, but if not, um, so that would get them started.
Are you, were you on, do it the twenty-eighth?
Well, I just, I mean, I'm just talking at this point, but I mean, if you guys are ready to make a decision by the twenty-eighth, I think that would be good, um, I mean, obviously I'll give you this information, and maybe we can make copies or something, so both of you can have it, um, but if you guys are good for that, but I mean, it's Thanksgiving weekend, so, unless you just need reading material.
Jennifer, if you could pass to them, they were asking the, all the documentation that was received during the demos, and, or before, and their bid proposals for Sam and Jeff to look over, or something.
Yeah, the bid proposals are on the shared drive, I'll send you an email, and then I'll have to get to you the documents from the presentations, only DevNet had documentation.
Do you have a copy that one of them could have, or?
Yeah, I could probably get one. Didn't have enough, I didn't take a copy.
Right, I didn't either.
But I'm sure we could come up with one easily.
Scan whatever we got.
Clear Basin didn't have any handouts.
Correct.
Whenever you think that it'll be ready, we can put that on the agenda, and we can also, we can have an agenda on the fifth, we just start at eight-thirty with scheduled meetings with each department, we could break somewhere in there and say, well, we're just gonna, you know, we usually get done early anyway, but it doesn't matter, we can put the agenda items still on the fifth, but put them at a certain time, where you think would be okay to do. I mean, we can stop at nine and go to the agenda and do whatever few little things are on there, maybe have a limited
Larry, can we do the limited agenda while you're gone, and then when you come back, go back into
I'm not gonna be here all day. In my sense, we're gonna be here all day on Tuesday.
Yeah, I know, only good thing we got going for us is Central's party afterwards that would go on one night.
Don't you have problems or something you gotta be at, Sam, you can't be out doing all this other stuff? Don't you gotta be working the store or something?
I should, but
You should.
On the, uh, on the fifty, are people scheduled for that, or is that just, yeah, you do? Okay, Department heads?
Every half hour, or?
Some of them are every fifteen minutes.
Starts at eight-thirty?
Yes, and I'll be here for that one, but we can squeeze in an agenda in there if you want, and then the sixth, we can start at eleven, or start, um, or we don't even need that date, if you want to just skip that day and go to the sixth, then
Go to seven.
Seventh, seventh.
Might get a full day?
Yeah.
I mean, we could start at, uh, eight o'clock on Tuesday the fifth, and, you know, try to write through something, um, real quick, if need be, um, I mean, we won't have any accounts payable or anything that week.
What are you talking about then, I'm sorry? Changing the time, or changing adding to it, what day?
Well, right now, on the fifth, we were starting at eight-thirty, maybe we start at eight, and that will be the agenda items, or anything else we need to clean up, and call that the agenda for the week, and then not have any meeting on the sixth, and start on Thursday at eight, or something here.
Yeah.
And go to whenever we think we need to, that's, uh, accounts payable then, is the first, so they would be printed on the fifth, so you would be approving those on the twenty-eighth.
So right now, we're on the fifth, sixth, and seventh?
No.
We'd get rid of the sixth.
Sixth, yeah. And if you start the seventh at eight?
Yeah, it would be accounts payable on the fifth.
What do we? So seventh if needed, sixth if needed, fifth we got till noon?
No, fifth we got all day till four-thirty.
Okay, so fifth we got all day, that's just meeting with each trying to find my notes, there you go.
Are we planning on bringing lunch in that day, just
We can.
Just keep going through?
Yeah.
And if you want, after they're
No, until we're done, that'll get us through.
After we get through the departments, we can start on what you guys want to do, you know?
Start at six in the morning, let's knock out some stuff, six to six, that's good.
We can do that on the seventh.
I would rather take the sixth off and do a full day on the seventh.
And start at seven? Eight, I mean?
Eight, yeah.
We can start at eight, and I can hold it till four if you want.
I don't know if we have to go all the way to four, but we could
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Block it in there if we need it.
We'll go all the way till four.
Okay.
I'll put money on it right now, I don't care if I lose that bet, because if we get done early, I win, win-win, or lose-lose, however you want to look at it.
Okay, so an agenda item at eight o'clock on the fifth?
Yes.
And then go into in-house budget discussions at eight-thirty?
Yes.
Okay, so when are we gonna make a decision on Clear Basin and DevNet software?
Is that what you're putting on the agenda for the fifth?
Whatever you tell me to.
What is the agenda item on the fifth at eight, that we were talking about?
At least accounts payable.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to do accounts payable that day?
And anything else that people, you know, a normal Tuesday.
If you have a normal Tuesday, we're gonna be here till five o'clock.
You're gonna be here till five anyway.
Right, but a limited agenda as far as
Okay.
The agenda item.
Why are we gonna be here till five?
Because we got budget.
We've never been here the whole time for that, we get, we pound through them.
And we pay, yes.
Kind of usually pull people in early, we get done with somebody.
Yes.
The more they talk, the less money they get. I think that's fair.
So I think if you guys can be ready to make a decision on the twenty-eighth for the collector-assessor software
I'd like to.
I think we do it that day.
I'd like to, I'd, I mean, just from talking, talking to Larry and talking to
Chris?
That we
Talking to Chris?
We, we need to make
Is Chris on board with, either one of them was he on board with? Is Chris on board with, either one of them was he on board with? Did you talk to Chris?
No.
Oh.
I talked to him briefly after the DevNet meeting.
Because he was one that wasn't crazy about DevNet before, or he was more for what he had. Is he on board with DevNet?
I don't know. I haven't spoken with him about it. I know he was, he thought DevNet had come a long way since he looked at it the last time, but that was the only comment that I got, but. You know, once it goes on the agenda, you know, you still have Monday to try to touch base with both of them and just get their thoughts on it. Or have them here at the meeting.
Okay, so you want to know what date to put it on?
That would probably be best.
Tuesday?
Have them, have them both here at the meeting and let's talk about it as a group.
Okay, so 28th, what else we got that day? No, we got that presentation from Kocan Extension. What's the Axiom Plastics Bond Project? What are we doing with that?
That's just, it's, really doesn't pertain to us. It came over to me and I had Joe look it over, and it's, it's the queen of the city and, and, so we don't. It's just basically legal information.
Okay, and then we got the re-adoption of the wastewater ordinance or revision of it. And closed session. That'd be all day too. Might as well put it in there. We can bring lunch that day too. So 28th, rest of the week, we don't have anything. Then the following week, we'll have Tuesdays at 8.
Yep.
Till 4 if needed. Wednesday, we're getting rid of. Thursday.
8:00 AM.
You're gonna change it to 8?
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that all works.
Get everybody one of their fresh.
And that's all I have, so.
That's all I had. Okay, did you see the stuff for, for the cellphone allowance?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't know where you were at with that.
Um, I mean, I'm, I'm good with Kevin getting it, but I think that's a countywide discussion on who gets that, because I know, oh, somebody else had asked me about other people getting that as well, and so, anyway, it's a.
Kind of countywide, any, like, deputy, like Bishop's got it, Landworth's got it, if they're directly below, so that's why I figure Kevin would fit into that category.
Mm-hmm.
Now, where it goes after that, we can talk about how we decide that, so.
It was kind of based on, you know.
But that's a separate issue.
Yeah, we were paying cellphone bills at one time to get away from that because of the IRS regulations on personal causes. We went to the stipend.
They'll give the stipend if they keep checking every call and which one's business, which one's personal, because that's what, that's what they wanted, yeah. So that's why we went to the stipend.
Yeah, and I can show you the policy and then the departments and who's on it now. I'll send that.
So then.
Well, just, I mean, you said every, every deputy, and so, you know, I think it just, I think it just needs to be a bigger discussion, because, you know, we got deputies out there on the road, we got Public Works guys out on the road, we got lots of people out on the road that may need to get ahold of people in certain situations, and so, you know, it just, where does it, where does it stop?
Yeah, where it starts and stops is kind of.
Great.
We can decide that all ourselves and say it's gonna be semi-genetic policy, and whoever wants one has to come to us and ask us. We can go no or yes at this time, and it can, I don't know, maybe you get a speeding ticket, and you don't want to give that patrolman a cellphone stipend, or maybe your road didn't get graded this week, and so you don't want the road grader to get his phone stipend. I'm just throwing stuff out there. You just, come on.
Larry, you're just here just to take. I gotta kick, gotta kick a dog every now and then. Just kick Larry.
It's Jeff, it's that eastern guy.
Ambulance guy, let you die, no stipend for him.
I think Kevin's deputy director, I think.
I thought his position fit through with what we have done.
Boy, with Donnie gone, you know, Judge Joyce has all different kinds of people following her.
Anything else?
I guess, does he get, does he need a form to you that goes on the pay form or what?
Yeah.
So we're, we're okay with that, so, I don't know. Then we're gonna talk about the diesel repairs and stuff at some point. When are we gonna talk about that, or wait till we get done with the budget, and then we can go over that stuff, because I know we've had some things in there that have been. Oh, we either need to address to get somebody that can take care of us and make it, you know, a priority for them. And somebody that we know we can take it to. We haven't bid anything out like that.
Yeah, obviously, when multiple ones break down at any one time, that's, that's a critical element, but, you know, that's why we have 12 ambulances, but we only use seven at any one time, so there's basically five in reserve. Jerry probably say different, but, you know, if we needed to use all seven 24 hours a day, we could. You know, obviously, sometimes there's, surely we won't have five of them down at one time, so, I mean, if a couple are down, that's.
Tough to say that.
It's a, it's a bigger deal, but we do need to have people that are receptive to that. But, you know, I think we also need to look at central maintenance too, and having our own facility, so.
I'm fine with that too, but I guess in the meantime, when you figure out on, when we have some of them, what did that last repair come up to be?
Fifty-eight hundred dollars.
Fifty-eight?
Eighty-seven hundred dollars.
Eighty-seven?
Eight.
Okay.
Basically, I had to take the whole front end off the truck and motor down to the heads, because it was an internal component.
How did we do that without bidding it? Do we got bid those types of things? Is that, did we bid out automotive repair with?
We have an EMS fleet maintenance and repair agreement with Onsite currently, and then anything that's warranty, obviously.
Was that warranty? That wasn't Onsite that fixed it?
I don't think. I think Onsite could probably handle that.
I don't see how we could go through a bid process for an ambulance repair. We can't have the ambulance side of service that way.
Well, we'd call it an emergency. We can do it that way. We can bid this type of stuff at the beginning of the year, and whoever is awarded to bid, that's who takes care of it. It's what they bid us.
I, I haven't had time to check into this more closely. I still need to find out why Onsite can't do this. That's what I need to find out. That's how the whole question came up, and this may be a case of, we've always done it this way. Again, I don't know.
No, we didn't.
Bill's back to work today, so.
When it was at the previous vendor, they, if it was something above and beyond, you know, automotive, uh, mainten, uh, yeah, maintenance, they took care of it. It was just, that's kind of thought how we did it. So, and that may be something we look at next time, is if you're gonna be our maintenance, you're gonna get our maintenance bid, you gotta be able to take care of it. So, either that or we bid just regular routine maintenance separate, and then do a, I don't know what you would even call that agenda.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, in this scenario, if Onsite couldn't have done it, we probably should have gotten just bids, you know, from different shops or whatever, and then you guys should have referred it as an emergency purchase. So, but I mean, ideally, whoever's doing your maintenance should be able to do those types of things, so.
That's somewhere we could have gotten creative with it too. We could have gotten the parts for it separately.
Yeah.
Then we could have did the labor separate. That way, it's all staying under 4,500. Just call around and get some bids, because there's, there were some emails that came across, and like Chris alluded to, there are several people around here that we've worked with that do work on, on diesel stuff, and that stuff, there are gonna be expensive repairs, but it's an expensive vehicle, so if we can make them last, you know, get another 100,000 out of them, we're gonna have a few fixes like that at 8,700.
Uh, we did talk to Onsite and see if they're qualified to work on a diesel.
I was waiting for Bill to get back to work, so that I can talk to him first, and then I'm gonna go, we're gonna go visit with Onsite and see why, why this whole thing even came up with, well, we just take these to Columbia. Again, like I said, I don't know why, how, what the, what the process has been passed, but that has been the process.
It might be something that we have to do, something similar to what Public Works does, and lowest and best with the available, available materials and time or something. But you don't have to, you can accept more than one vendor on the bid, so, you know, obviously, if there's a, somebody that specializes in diesel would be better than somebody that specializes in oil changes.
Yeah, I don't know if they'd be, because whenever they bid it, you know, they want the whole pie, so I don't know if they would be less willing to bid. We just have to see, but that's my only thought when you first mentioned.
Yeah, we can do it either way. Say it's gotta be, they gotta be able to do all of it, or else we can do it separate. If it's routine maintenance stuff, and they want to do, you know, small stuff, brakes and stuff, but when it comes to the engines.
This whole thing caught me by surprise, because Onsite's done everything up to this point, and they've done some pretty major things, you know, where they've had to tear the motor down pretty significantly with the depth issues and the injectors and all that stuff, so this was an, I think this particular one was an internal oil problem, and I, I'll be honest, I don't know why this went down the path that it did, but I, I was waiting for Bill to get back to work so we could have this discussion in Columbia with Josh and see just what the, what the particulars are, because it would have been the cheapest, I think, because of our bid, to have him fix it, because we get a break on parts and we get a break on labor compared to the other places.
And just for future, there's state stuff we can look at too, see if it could fit that bill, you know, if something like that comes up again, but first see why, so.
All right, I'm trying to see if I had any other ones that came through that we needed to. Y'all got anything else?
Since there are a few department heads, I might remind that when we use the P cards, the purchasing cards, it should be for stuff we can't, that we don't normally have an account with, like if we can buy stuff from a company that we have an account with, don't use your P card. Use, use your account with that company. It's mostly for travel and for internet purchases, so, because a lot of times your people will have the cards, and they won't know if you have money or you don't have money within your budget line, so it becomes important not to just use the P cards for everything. That's all I want to say.
Anything else, Jeff?
Not yet. I haven't caught up on emails in a while. Got a bunch of them out there, but. I just got rid of about 20 of them, though, just from the one discussion. Rest of it, I think we're getting on the agendas, so that clears it up. All right, go ahead if we're done, if something else comes up.
Um, I did have a couple of things. We had a Road and Bridge Advisory Meeting the other day, and, uh, anyway, um, we talked about three different things that we were taking a little bit of comment on. Policy on our driveway approaches and pipes. We're developing a policy to kind of address that. The Road and Bridge Committee's gonna be kind of a stormwater committee as well, temporary, just because we need a avenue for the public to create comments and complaints, and then, and then also, we're, we're getting closer to the Small Communities Grant that was in our sales tax. There was that $800,000 to try to do cooperative projects with the small community, so we're working on getting the criteria for those applications done, and so, anyway, just kind of wanted to get you guys up to speed. If you got any comments or, or whatever on, on those three things, we're, we're trying to finalize some of that. As soon as we get some comments back from the committee, we'll forward you those draft policies or whatever for you guys to look at, so. Miss anything, Larry? And then, also, Gary Benbowen said he was gonna serve on that planning committee, so if Shannon or somebody can get me that information, I'll try to get it to Gary.
Okay, did you get an email from me and I CC'd him or vice versa?
I think so, yeah, yeah, I did get that.
I'll make sure that that went through. If not, I'll. Um, when did, when is Pearson's up? In April? But I think he was just trying to give us plenty of heads up.
Yeah, I think he would like to resign as soon as we have someone to replace him.
So we could do it as soon as, okay.
Well, I have Shannon double-checked with that, but I think that was understanding higher.
Yeah, well, what we might want to do is we invite him to the next meeting, and he can just sit in here and watch the, the meeting and see what we, what we do in there. If it's one of them five-minute meetings, we'll make sure it's one of the quick meetings. That way, he's ready to jump on board with it.
It's not controversial.
Yeah, no variances.
Yeah.
So.
Good idea.
Okay, yeah, well, I'm glad, glad we found somebody. Did y'all bid out the roof repair then for Dome of America?
It's out.
It's out. That it?
Uh, Stormwater Detention, some possibility of having some land for that. Are we gonna put that on the agenda at some point? Or I guess if Eric wants us to look at that, I guess we should put that on the agenda. You know what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think that's it, then. Would you send us Debbie the budget calendar? Oh, that was just what the new times of nature.
Oh, yeah, that was on the 5th, everybody's.
You should note not scheduling anything in December.
Well, you know what? I'm already giving up my crown on Tuesday, so.
Oh, Princess, okay. Princess Debbie, give up the crown. Got your glass livers.
Can I bring the pliers in?
Bring them. I do, I got, my wisdom teeth are supposed to come out at some point. I ain't figured out when yet. Might do that for a fundraiser too, so I can pull that sucker out. Either they can record it, get to mess with me when I'm all hopped up on it, whatever they put you on with the funny gas.
Yeah.
That could be interesting. I know my boys would be first to watch that.
We could pass all kinds of stuff.
Kathy might want to know what you really have to say.
It might be the one time she gets to say something.
Can have both done at once?
I don't know how they do it. I, it's just, I've been supposed to do it for like the last four years, and I still have it.
Do they file it?
Yeah, because I bite my cheeks. But then they say get them done before they get bad, then you gotta cut them out. That's why you can just pull them out. It's a lot easier. And while I'm healthy.
What about Larry can do that? We just thing and tie it to a chain and put?
I don't know. I gotta bring a dog to the vet. I'll check, see if they can do it. It's just pulling teeth, can't be that big of a deal. Couple horse pills and get you all limbered up.
Well, yeah, somebody at Help the Park probably can do that.
She did fix my eye the other day. She did fix my eye the other day. She tried to pull it around to the backside of my head, but at least when I got back to work, I was like, man, it's not bothering me anymore.
We went and spoke to the Cosmopolitans last Friday. I think we wrestled them. Yeah, they want to give us money.
After you talked to them? Or did it shut you up? Sorry.
I don't care. Long as they give us money.
All right, so.
We done?
Yeah.
Maybe stay in recess till 4:30.
Second.
Holf paper.
Larry, do you know if they're gonna, that road out there?